The January meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the Secretary please take role?
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Ms. Newcomb.
Here.
Mr. Marx.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mottessa.
Here.
Chairman Gattens.
Here. May I please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain your necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Any remarks? I'm going to make a motion that the board push the new business to the end of our meeting.
I'll second that.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone else have any remarks? Mr. Sweeney, can you attest and verify the postings?
Thank you. I, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton, do solemnly swear that the properties listed tonight were posted with a notice of zoning hearing in reference to tonight's meeting. Following addresses are as follows: 11117 and 119 Swetland Street, 2505 North Washington Avenue, 614 Wyoming Avenue, corner of Linden and Sherwood Court, corner of West Olive Street and Providence Road, 1925 Sanderson, and 1403 North Washington Avenue. Properties were posted on December 31st, 2018, and January 2nd, 2019. However, I will note that we have three continuances for this evening. Item number one, 1117-19 Swetland Street, 2505 North Washington Avenue, and medical dimensions, corner of Linden and Sherwood Court, all of which have continued to next month's hearing. So if there's anyone here to testify or to have any involvement with these properties, just note that they're not going to go tonight. With that in mind, I'll call the first property, Don Mamano, 614 Wyoming Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Attorney Patrick Lavelle. I'm here with Don Mamano to assist him in his presentation this evening. I think you have his application there. What we would like to do is to pass out copies of the exhibits that he's going to be referring to. Why don't I do that?
Attorney Lavelle, while you're doing that, I'm going to swear your client in. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address, and please spell your name, is all.
Donald Mamano, M.A.M.M.A.N.O., 811 Clay Avenue, Scranton. Thank you. In addition to the handouts that we've just given to you that Mr. Mamano will go over with you, we have three renderings that we'd like to bring to your attention tonight concerning the proposal that he has. So why don't I hold each one of these?
Yeah, if you want, you could take that one off the table and pause for a hold up.
Why don't you explain to the board what's depicted here?
Okay, so the building in the application, 614 Wyoming Avenue, is right here. Vacant six-story commercial building, roughly fifty-six thousand square feet. I'm acquiring, my intention is to acquire this building. Colors Incorporated is a paint distributor that's located right here in this lower parking lot, Freeman Electric on the corner. Plan is to acquire the three properties in order to create the parking needed to make this building work for residential and commercial uses. We have plans for thirty-nine apartments on floors three through six on four floors of the building. I've figured out a way by removing the colors, building the lower lot, and then initially doing the retaining wall for the upper portion of the parking lot, the second lot, which will enter off the alleyway here. This picture is not as accurate as the newest rendering that we had done by the engineer because it wasn't as feasible. But the point is, in the back lot, we're going to have thirty-nine parking spaces for the project, one for every apartment. And then we're going to come back at a later date, once we determine the best use for the commercial space, to determine what their parking requirements are. We're going to have roughly fourteen spots in the lower lot, thirty-nine on the upper lot, on the Colors property and this building, while maintaining Freeman Electric as a long-term tenant in that building, going to improve that property as well. And mainly, what we're here for today is 614 Wyoming and the parking for that project.
Did you recently acquire that building from somebody else? Because I know it was under ownership of somebody different.
Yeah, I'm under contract to buy the three properties this month. I was supposed to close on it.
No, I meant the actual building, like the 614, the building. I know it was owned by-
Yeah, I'm buying it from someone, an entity that currently owns it today.
What was that?
I'm in the process of purchasing this building.
Okay, I just, I just was, because I know that they came before us for something else in the past.
Yeah, no, years ago. It was a different use, different tenant, different people. But my plan to purchase it to create the parking needed for that property, that's really the only reason I'm buying the two adjacent properties. And looking at that whole block as a whole, it's, it could use some work. It's not the prettiest-looking block, so I'm happy while doing this project for the residential and future commercial use of the property, to clean up the whole block, create parking, and clean up the outside of Freeman Electric and really-
Your purchase of Freeman Electric, and I take it that's their parking lot behind their property, if I'm correct?
Freeman Electric lot goes from here to here. There's a rear gate here to go to the garage.
Right, so you're not going to take anything off Freeman's business? You're not going to utilize any of them spots there? Or are you planning to utilize-
No, I can't. They need the parking for their business.
That's what I was asking.
They actually need more parking as well. And I think they have an arrangement with the lot across the street where San Don Tire used to be. But no, I can't. They wouldn't be willing to give any spots because they need parking for their business and their employees. But it worked out perfect that we have one spot per apartment, plus we have extra fourteen spots down below. Once I determine what we're going to do with the first two floors, we'll come back at that point to figure out what the parking requirements are and what we can satisfy. Hopefully, we can satisfy it.
So you're before us just for the parking issue and the apartments tonight, not the storefronts?
Correct. I have thirty-nine apartments. We have figured out a way to create one spot per unit. I believe the ordinance is asking for one and a half spots. My intention is, with this building, strictly geared towards medical students, which is a block away from the building. Most of my, I mean, I have three hundred and fifty tenants now currently renting from various companies that I have undergraduate, graduate, and medical students. Primarily, my medical students that I have currently renting from me rarely use their cars, and I believe that they all have the ability to park in a medical school-owned lot for a hundred dollars a year. Regardless of the parking requirement, if there was zero, like some of the downtown commercial buildings, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing this project without having a spot per apartment. So it took a while to figure out a way to design the lot with the site work and elevations with the engineers to determine a way to make it work. So I'm happy that we're able to create one spot per apartment. But we're here today to ask for a variance on the one and a half needed. And out of the thirty-nine apartments, there's only four that are two-bedroom. Every other one is a one-bedroom, so-
Are any of these apartments going to be handicapped accessible?
There is. I believe it's one per floor, whatever's required per code.
And what's your square footage plan for each apartment?
They're on the printout that we gave you. Out of the thirty-nine apartments, I think there's only fifteen of them that are below six hundred square feet. And they're highlighted on the fourth, fifth, and sixth pages. So out of the ones that are under six hundred square feet, 519, 565, I think the blended average of the apartments below six hundred square feet is a little over five hundred square feet.
Is it, Jack, is it six hundred or six fifty?
Six hundred.
Six hundred? So we're looking at some of your apartments, though you're down to 442, 468, and 468, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Yeah, on the fourth page.
Yeah. That's a big drop.
What are the square footage of the other apartments? How much bigger are they?
You know, unfortunately, it's tough to read on this printout. The larger one is about nine eighty, seven ninety-four, seven sixty-eight. They're all low over seven, between seven and nine hundred square feet is the average apartment in the building. And the thirteen, or the fifteen apartments that are below six hundred are, the lowest is 442, the largest is five-
So you've got sixteen that are definitely below six hundred?
Fifteen, fifteen. The largest out of the lower than six hundred is five hundred nineteen square feet. I'm sorry, five sixty-five.
And the lowest is 442?
Yeah.
And on every floor, you have four units, basically, if I'm looking at this?
There's four units below six hundred on floors four, five, and six. Floor three, we have just three units because the apartments in the building, the main entrance for the apartments is going to be off this rear lot. So you're going to enter the parking lot here. We'll have the thirty-nine spots back here, and we're going to open up the back of the building, blow it out, have like a nice entrance with a roof. My intention for that is, is to kind of block off from the other part of the neighborhood back here. So the medical students would come in here to access the building from the rear lot, which, the way the elevation is, from here, you're entering on the third floor, where the front, you're on the first floor of the building. So with the slope of the elevation, this is actually a separate entrance to the building.
Why don't we show them the other renderings?
Are these, are these full apartments, or are they like studios?
There are some studios, three bedrooms, and there is four two-bedrooms.
The thirty-nine parking spots that you showed there, that's between the front and the rear?
No. The thirty-nine parking spots that I have here, to make it a little clearer, this is just a rear lot.
Okay.
Because I want to have all the residential tenants enter from the back, enter the building from the back lot, and have one spot per unit from the back. We're going to have an additional fourteen on the lower lot. We're not going to have a need for it for the residential, but that's going to be fourteen spots dedicated for the commercial use, when I determine what that use is.
Jack, it doesn't matter if it's studio, right? It's still six hundred feet?
Yeah, this is a better view just from the street. I mean, if anyone got driven by the buildings today, you can see what it looks like. You know, my plan, beautify this block by tearing down the colored building, building a retaining wall from my building to the side of Freeman Electric. We're going to create a lower-level parking lot. The second tier up top is going to be the thirty-nine spots for the residential apartments.
So then you're saying that the main entrance for these apartments are going to be behind that tree? Am I understanding you correct?
It's going to be back here.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
The wall's going to be a little higher than it looks like in the rendering, but it's going to be entering in from the third floor.
And where's the, where's the elevator located to, for the handicap?
That's also why it worked out well, the way we designed the building, is, you can see here. By us creating the entrance right here to the building, right here is the elevator.
Okay.
The elevator shaft is there. It's probably sixty feet from the entrance of the building, where if we entered from the front and we maintain the existing elevator, it's like a hundred and eighty feet away.
You have to walk away to the back?
Yeah, so it worked out great for the ADA.
In your drawing here, I'm looking at it, basically, the apartments that are below the six hundred are up in the same spot, the same area on each floor, it looks like. Am I correct?
Yeah, the way we designed the building, all the apartments are stacked. They're one on top of one another, which makes it easier for plumbing, electrical, mechanical. They're a little different per floor, if there's any difference with the column spacing or the sizing of the columns. But they're relatively the same apartments, floor by floor, stacked in one another.
There's no way that you can pull some off of the three remaining ones on each side of that, each floor, and get that 442, 468 up higher by taking the, I'll say, I don't know if that's the front or the back I'm looking at, but the three remaining apartments on that side. I can't see what the square footage on there, maybe you could see it better?
So the reason why we separated where we did is, you know, with a building like this, a hundred-plus years old, you know, they were built for manufacturing purposes. There's columns throughout the building. So we're really building the partitions to divide the apartments in line with the columns. We could, you know, in essence bury the column in the dividing wall. So that was a major thing, why it's not the easiest building to work with, you know, it's, we have limitations.
Yeah, I have no problem with your parking. I mean, you have one spot, which is a lot more than a lot of people come before us have. I have concern about downsizing that much. You're going a hundred and fifty-eight down on some of them.
You know-
Well, let me finish.
Okay.
When we come down that far, we open the door for everyone to come before us with the same thing. We have a code that's six hundred square feet. And if we keep dropping it down like that, then you, and the next, and the next, and also, everything come before us is going to be four hundred, four hundred feet, or smaller at times. I just wish there's a way you could bump fifty feet into every apartment there and get it up around the five hundred number. I'm just speaking for myself. I prefer someone more comfortable with that.
No, and I agree, and I appreciate your input on it, and I would love to do the same. And I've talked to the architect and working with to see, well, can we just get an extra ten feet here, ten feet there? And unfortunately, with the building, with the way it's built and designed, I don't have that luxury. I mean, I was just looking at other buildings that have come before the board for similar things, for minimum square footage requirements. I know the building on Jefferson and Lackawanna, I think it's all under six hundred square feet. I mean, I'm going for fifteen out of thirty-nine, it's like forty percent of the building that's below.
And see, that's just the building I'm talking about in a roundabout way.
I think, yeah.
Because once that door opened, here you are. And I'm not insulting you right now, but it's just common sense.
I thought that was approved for, because they had so many handicapped apartments.
No, that was not.
That was dedicated to fifty-five and over.
Fifty-five, I knew there was something. There was some stipulation for that square footage.
Right.
So, I mean, yours isn't fifty-five and over, so there's a difference. And I'm not trying to argue with you.
I understand.
I'm just speaking from the boards, my point of view on this board, down the road I'm looking at.
I wish I could make them big.
Your parking's fine. You don't hear me say that too often. Your parking's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I wish I could make them bigger, but unfortunately, this is the biggest we can make it to make the building work. It's tough even to make it work at this. But I believe those-sized apartments would be very attractive to medical students. I own 317 Linden, where I have fifty-six apartments. I have twenty-four one-bedroom apartments in that building. I didn't build the building. I purchased it and renovated it after the fact. But out of the twenty-four one-bedroom apartments, they're all below six hundred square feet. So it works, as far as the size. If it wasn't marketable, I'd be concerned. And I don't know where the six hundred comes from, but I know it's in the book, and I tried to get as close to it as we could for designing it. This is the best that we could do.
Are you one hundred percent set, like dead-set, on having the thirty-nine units? If you had to change something, like merge two, merge two of the four hundred and something apartments together and make them one, and, I mean, you'd even have more parking for the other tenants. They're just a suggestion.
For the layout? Yeah, it could work that way. Take down the wall, make the units bigger, make the apartments-
Yeah, like on, I don't know what floor this is, but you have a 442 and a 470. If you took those two and made them one, you still have, it's just minimize, it's just making them out of-
It could be done, absolutely. But for me, financially, it wouldn't work. I mean, with thirty-nine apartments for a five-million-dollar project, it's tough to make this work. I'm trying to make it work, and I'd love to be able to make this project work, but unfortunately, the thirty-nine units that we have designed is the best that we can come up with to maximize the amount of apartments you can build in order to make the project financially make sense, which, I know that's not your concern, that's more of mine, but if I couldn't do thirty-nine apartments as we planned, I'm not sure the project would make sense financially.
And I do agree that. I mean, I know, like me and Paul were talking before the meeting, you know, the idea, the sizes are, the apartments are getting smaller. I mean-
There's a need for it now that I don't think it used to exist.
And, Jack, is that something they might address when they're going to?
Very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not against your project by any means.
No, I understand.
I'm just looking, once we start, until this book is changed, this is the book we live with, is how I look at it. And the more we variance it out, you know, I mean, it could be the building next to this one, next year is that we take down the two-fifth and they jam two hundred units in it, and then all of a sudden, you don't want that because now you're crowded next door to you. Just an example, I'm trying to-
I mean, I would think any new construction projects, I would look at them differently. But an existing building, you're really subject to the building condition you have. I mean, right now, I'm building three apartments above Scanlon's Restaurant. They're all over a thousand square feet. They're one-bedrooms. Probably similar rents, I mean, I don't even know the exact rents, but the point is, they're well over a thousand square feet. They're beautiful, but the building, the way the columns were, the brick walls, it allowed me to have them larger. I wish I had that luxury here, but with eighteen columns per floor, it's a lot to work around.
How many two-bedroom apartments are there in the whole project?
There is four two-bedroom apartments in the whole project.
One on each floor.
And the rest of them are one?
What's that?
And the rest of them are one, right?
Yeah, one, and I say they're all one-bedrooms. Some might be considered a studio.
Oh, but, yeah, okay.
But one-bedroom or studio, one person per apartment.
So it wouldn't be feasible to take that left corner of the building on the top three floors and convert those three apartments into two? To get you like maybe a six to seven-hundred-square-foot two-bedroom apartment? But it doesn't sound like it'll work for your numbers?
The rent we'd get for one apartment opposed to two, the difference there isn't really-
You're going to like-
It's really not going to work.
Three apartments?
No, it wouldn't work for me.
So you have thirteen on each floor?
No, there is, well, thirty-nine in total. So one floor has, four floors have ten.
Yeah, I see it now.
No, three floors have ten, one has the nine. Third floor has nine because we removed the one apartment to create the entrance off the parking lot.
All right. We have the parking situated. Now, you're going to come back here in the event that this gets moved forward. Before you do anything commercially, you're coming back to us.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct. I'm not sure what the commercial tenant's going to be, what my use is going to be. So today, I'm here, parking, minimum square footage for the apartments. When I'm ready, and then, you know, hopefully, I can get a commercial tenant. It's not easy in the City of Scranton. I'm trying to. When that day comes, I'll be happy to come back before the board, present my plan for the first two floors as a commercial, present at that point, and then see what's needed, and hopefully, we can make it work.
I guess I have a comment on that, is if he puts in a commercial spots that need fourteen or less parking spots, which he has, then he doesn't have to come back to us, okay? But if he puts in some type of retail that needs in excess of fourteen spots, then he would have to come back to us.
And also, is it, I know he's here for a variance for the relief of one-half spot per unit. Is there also a variance on the sides of the apartments that are smaller?
There's, and Attorney Lavelle could correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the parking variance, we have the size of the apartments. We also have a square footage per dwelling unit problem. The CN Zone requires five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, which would bring us just under twenty thousand square feet. I don't know what, it doesn't look like you have twenty thousand square feet. Do you know what that you have?
What's the total square footage of the building?
Yeah.
What's it per floor?
It's about eight thousand per foot per floor.
So twenty-four thousand.
So it would be sixteen thousand for the floors, three through six.
Okay. So we're going to need a variance for that as well?
Yes.
So we're looking for four? So we have three different variances here. Am I correct, Dan? The apartment size.
Parking square foot and lot area. Yeah, three.
So three. The square footage of the apartments, the parking spots per unit, as well as the square footage. Okay. Is anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
Now, can we vote for all three variances at once and just get it through, or do we have to do it as individually?
You, if, the board could combine them if you want, if you wish.
Okay, well-
It's really one project, or I think one depends on-
It is one project, yeah.
Before we jump into this, while we're on parking, can I, can you hold up your, is that drawing depict the back of it? So you have your buffer zones and everything that you need in the back and?
Yeah, that's designed on here.
Can you bring that up closer so we can get a better look at it? No, that's the court, the back line, right?
Yes, this is the back.
There's no residential.
For entering here.
I don't think he needs one first.
Looks like the buffer is more in the lower lot than this one. I'm not sure exactly, so you're running with the board.
Yeah, there's-
The entrance is going to be here. I'm going to have, I don't even know what the buffer requirement is. I plan on lining this whole fencing off, lighting trees.
Over here, Dan.
Yeah, I think Dan has something to say about it.
Because there's no residential lot line bordering this property, he doesn't have a buffer requirement. That's only where you have a residential lot line bordering this property. And all the borders are commercial, and zone commercial.
You have a plan on lining it anyway, but this is not-
You're, is that Vine Street that's on the side there, or something?
No, this is Forest Court.
Right, where your entrance is coming in to the parking lot.
Forest Court.
Forest Court. Okay, good enough, thanks.
Are there any entrances into the building from Wyoming Avenue?
There is. The main entrance to the building, the roof of the front. And then my intention is, the main entrance is going to be for the commercial space with this lot and any other residential apartment I need that far.
Okay.
Thank you. I make a motion?
A motion to vote for all three at the same time?
Yeah.
A second?
So this vote is to combine them?
All three.
To combine the three variances.
It's not a vote on the-
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes. By a vote of five to zero, request to combine them has been approved.
I make a motion to vote on the project?
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes. By a vote of five to zero, it's been approved. Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, my name's Attorney Mike Cosgrove, I'm here on behalf of Time Shamrock Outdoor, my client and the Scranton School District have a partnership and have entered into a lease to construct a billboard on the Seventh Avenue property, which is across the street from Scranton High School, it's a much-needed economic need for the district, it's the second such partnership that has taken place, we are here because the initial permit application for the billboard was denied as not meeting the requirements of section seven twelve F-two of the zoning ordinance, basically, it's very simple, our position tonight is that we are asking that a variance be granted from that requirement, since the abutting roadway to street, Seventh Avenue, is clearly and realistically an arterial street, even though it's not classified that way on the street map, classification map, and therefore we would meet, we do meet the requirements of seven twelve F-two, but we would need the variance because it has not been updated, the lack of the update of the map is, creates the unnecessary hardship that we would suffer and would require the variance, so for the record, legally, I just want to put on the record that we're also requesting a variance by a stopple, equitable stopple, invested rights also, we're going to submit the testimony of my client, David Mehall of Time Shamrock, who will also, who will testify that the site also had a prior billboard in at least two thousand and seven at the same exact site, and also that a billboard recently was permitted in the city just down the roadway, on Providence Road, we're assuming because it was considered an arterial street, which it really is, and then we will have Engineer John Henemuth testify to that fact, giving his expert opinion regarding the classification of Seventh Avenue, so I'll call David Mehall first.
Please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Please state your name and address and spell your name, please, your last name.
David Mehall, M.E.H.A.L.L., reside at one oh three Belmont Avenue in Clark Screen.
Thank you, proceed.
Well, good evening, members of the board, my name is Dave Mehall, I'm the Director of Outdoor Media at Time Shamrock Outdoor, this is my fourteenth year with the company, I've been with the billboard division since its inception in two thousand and thirteen, we're excited to expand upon our public and private partnership we have with the Scranton School District, the opportunity for this particular location came about back in the fall, when the previous bidder for the, for the project backed down from their commitment to the school district, our plan is to install a state-of-the-art, back-to-back, ten-foot by thirty-foot digital billboard on unused property on the corner of Seventh Avenue and West Olive Street, across from the Scranton High School, this lot is currently used for parking during big sporting events that happen at the school and at the stadium, as Attorney Cosgrove mentioned, Lamar Advertising did have a billboard on this particular property within recent years, and I do have a photo of that I can show you if anyone is interested, we will be able to control the lighting emitted from the board and make sure it satisfies all requirements needed, the board will also have the ability to send out emergency information such as Amber Alerts, this board would be an off-premise sign and would feature a total of seven advertisers at any given time, all of the content of the sign would have been, have to have been approved by Time Shamrock Outdoor, and of course, we would not have any inappropriate content, such as strip clubs or tobacco, I'm not gonna get into the economic hardship, but everybody's understanding of the situation going on in the Scranton School District right now, and this will provide stable financial assistance over the course of the next twenty-five years, in addition, the billboards will be able to showcase all the many talents and accomplishments of the students within the district, as well as give the district an outlet to promote special events that are happening within their schools, there's a lot of positive that's happening inside those walls, and nobody's really talking about it, and this will hopefully give them an opportunity to do so, we feel our sign meets all requirements necessary for a billboard located in the CG zone, the reason we're here, as Attorney Cosgrove mentioned, and specifically the reason John Henemuth is with us, is to show that this road is in fact an arterial road, and that our original permit be granted on its own merit, as I mentioned, Lamar did have a billboard on this property in recent years, Birdhouse Outdoor just recently installed one down the street on the C and Sunday Building a few months ago, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have, or I can turn it back over to Attorney Cosgrove, or to Mr. Henemuth.
Just, just to be clear, you do have a contract with the Scranton School District to place this sign?
Yes. Yeah, it was voted on in the October meeting, I believe it was, October, November.
The only reason I ask is because I can't, I have to abstain from voting because Scranton School District is my employer, so...
How high off the ground is this billboard gonna be?
The pole would be fifteen, it would be a fifteen-foot pole, the board would sit on top of it, so the top of the sign above grade would be twenty-five feet.
You don't feel that poses a threat to them kids trying to cross that street?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
You don't feel that that poses a threat, people not paying attention, coming down the road?
I do not feel that, no.
Not that you're aware of?
No.
Okay, I, I, I think that's, you're, you're, you're creating a new hazard there, each one of them kids have to cross four different lanes to get across the street, now you throw something blinking twenty, twenty-three feet off the ground, people aren't paying attention there to begin with, and I, I think it's a bad idea, I think it's a bad place to put a billboard.
Sorry, there was a billboard there before, a long episode.
Not a light-up billboard, no, let me see a picture of that billboard, that was there.
Section the second and third page of this particular...
Thanks. Thank you. And how big was this?
I believe it's a ten-and-a-half by twenty-two-feet sign.
That doesn't look like the same location, though, in my opinion, that's not the same location, that's closer to the field than where you're putting this, this sign, so I, I wouldn't render my decision on, that that billboard's in the exact same location, because it's not.
I think it's on the same site, the same property that's owned.
Same property, Attorney Cosgrove, not, not the same, as he stated, it was in the same position this one's gonna be in, but it's not, it's definitely not.
We can see that.
And in all honesty, it might have been there before, but it's not there now, and it's gone, since two thousand and seven is the latest that you said you could see according to your, your picture here, so it's gone roughly twelve years, eleven and a half, twelve years, so to me, that doesn't come into play, because it could have been illegal there in the first place.
I could add a little bit light to that, it was removed when the Sonic opened.
I'm sorry?
I said, I can add a little bit to this, it was removed when the Sonic Restaurant was opened, because it was basically over by the Sonic Restaurant a little bit more than, so, the timeframe, I think they were open about five years, maybe, six years before they, so, but it was part of the Sonic property and removed because of that.
And as, as we discussed with, with Jack, if our sign needed to go back a little bit further to exactly what that location was, we are of course amicable to do that.
Any questions for him? Do you have any more questions?
No.
Let's, let's hear from your engineer next, please.
Hi, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Please state your name and address and spell your last name, please.
Sure, John Henemuth, one thousand Dunham Drive, Dunmore, my spelling of my name is
You can proceed.
First of all, let me clarify, I'm a professional land surveyor, not an engineer, I usually say I'm a working man, thank you.
Well, he gave you the title, so I thought I'd respect you with it, so...
Thank you, I appreciate that very much, I've been asked by Time Shamrock to look at the zoning relating to the proposed sign at the corner, as has been explained at the corner of Olive and Seventh Avenue, it's my opinion that if you look at the street collector map that's shown in the current ordinance, which I'm sure you all are aware was in nineteen ninety-three ordinance, the map attached to that is of the same date, looking at it carefully, and it's very hard to look at that map carefully because it's so small, but Jack Sweeney and people of zoning let us look at a larger map, and we were able to determine quite simply that Seventh Avenue where it exists today isn't shown on that map, Olive Street is not in the same location as it, as is shown on that map, Seventh Avenue was shown and defined as a local street on that map, if I could read to you quickly, let me change the lenses, excuse me a second, local street in your, in the ordinance page, definition on two twenty-seven is by definition, designed to provide access to abutting properties and a route to collector roads, routes, excuse me, right-of-way of a local street in the city subdivision ordinance calls for up to fifty feet, in some cases sixty feet, I can testify accurately that the right-of-way of Seventh Avenue is two hundred feet, there's no wider street in the city of Scranton than Seventh Avenue, that was all redone when the school was built, and when there was a realignment of Seventh Avenue by Pendot, which I can't tell you specifically what year it is, but the Pendot right-of-way maps call for two hundred feet, the Pennsylvania turnpike in many places is not two hundred feet wide, it's, this is, in use, I'll read to you if I may again, the definition of an arterial street from that same ordinance, designed for large volumes and high-speed traffic with access to abutting properties restricted, this portion of Seventh Avenue, this is where Seventh Avenue terminates and Providence Road begins, if you're, and I'm sure most of you are aware of it, Seventh Avenue there, all the way till you cross over Linden Street, there's, there's no access, the only new access there is the soon-to-be-opened Sheets has a turn off of it, but there's no other turns, everything else is by streetlight, there's, there's no other turns, so, by volume alone, and I can only speculate to the numbers of volume, it's very heavily used, we all know the speed there is pretty excessive, remembering that all streets in the city of Scranton are posted at twenty-five miles an hour, that's certainly not a twenty-five mile an hour road, to give you some other points of comparison after having said that right-of-way is two hundred feet, Lackawanna Avenue is an eighty-foot right-of-way, Washington Avenue is sixty feet right in front of us here, so, i- it's my opinion that this, this portion of Seventh Avenue is in fact an arterial street, the city hasn't updated its mapping and the zoning, and I understand that that may be in the offing in this coming year, or, or the here, near future, so, there's no doubt in my opinion that it's set up to be an arterial street, and no doubt when this new zoning comes out, this will be classified as an arterial street, if this is an arterial street today, the zoning for this district is CG, general commercial, Time Shamrock wouldn't have to come here, they'd meet every aspect of the ordinance right on the spot, it's just caught in that warp, time warp as you might want to call it, between what was then nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and nineteen use, this two thousand and nineteen use has been this way for several years, as we all know, since the realignment of Seventh Avenue, the reconstruction, so again, my, my point is, is that we're in a time轴, this is an arterial street, still called a collector's street, or, excuse me, still called a local street, which in fact is not in the same place as it's even shown on the existing ordinance.
Any questions?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but it's an assumption that it's gonna be changed, until it's changed, it's not changed, so we're gonna assume that, all we can do is assume that it's gonna be changed in the future, we don't know if it definitely is or isn't.
Sure.
We don't even know if this is gonna take place this year or ten years from now for this city, so, no different than the last case, we, we have a book outdated, yeah, in a lot of spots it's outdated, but it's the book we go by too, and I do appreciate what you're saying, but I have to look at what's in that book right now, and, and see what's right or wrong, and to first to say this book should be changed, we had many cases that it just caused problems for us, you know, month after month, so hopefully they change it, but I'm just saying, everything you're saying, it sounds good, everything, but at this point, it's an assumption that it's gonna happen, so...
Just to that point, Mr. Chairman, a few rebuttals, just, the denial that we received was strictly for not meeting the requirement of off-premises signs, specifically section seven twelve F-two, so I just want to make the point that we've already, all the other requirements of billboard requirements and the zoning were met, including the lighting and glaring aspect of it, that was not denied, we were not denied for that reason.
Just to... This was, their permit was denied by your office, Jack, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I, I didn't know, we didn't know that.
Yeah, Attorney Cosgrove is correct, everything is in order with the exception of...
Under seven twelve F-two, an off-sign, an off-premise sign, which this is, is only permitted within two hundred and fifty feet of an existing right-of-way of an arterial street or an expressway, all right, it does not, it's not within two hundred and fifty feet of the expressway, the question for the board to answer is, is it's, is it within two hundred and fifty feet of an arterial street, and that's, that's really the question here.
Right.
Okay, and the arterial street by definition, in our ordinance, says it's designed for large volumes of high-speed traffic with access to abutting properties restricted, I, I think if I understand, Mr. Henemuth is saying that Seventh Avenue has been designed for large volumes of high-speed traffic and does have abutting properties restricted access, that's his opinion, now, you have to render, you have to render an opinion whether you agree with that or not, and it's not, there's nothing in this ordinance that needs to be changed on that, what needs to be, what needs to be decided is whether the new Seventh Street as laid out, does qualify as an arterial street, that's really what it comes down to.
And that, that road goes, has continued Seventh Avenue until it ties into Providence Road at Olive Street, is that where Providence Road takes over on, on this map?
Providence Road takes over on the other side of, of Olive Street, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and again, we had argued that you obviously already had this issue because a billboard was granted just short, a short distance down Providence Road, so Providence Road had to be determined by your board to be a, an arterial roadway, we're assuming, otherwise it wouldn't be permitted there, it's, it's nowhere, it's further away from the expressway than we are, thank you.
But you're right on that corner.
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that one came before us, I think, that was determined by Jack's office that it was arterial street.
Correct, that, for the board's purpose, it did not come before us, before the board.
Do you mind if we swear Mr. Sweeney in, and I ask him about that?
Of course, of course, go right ahead.
We, we did have one come before us, but...
It's not that one?
Not that one.
No, it's not that one, it's a different one, and the, and the board that you're referring to down on the C and Sunday Building was, was granted by mistake, it was actually denied, and was, was, the permit was issued before we realized the mistake was done, and it was too far down the road to, the board was up and the timeframe elapsed for us to, to pull the, pull the, the permit, so, and it was issued in, in error, basically, which we've explained to the Scranton Times and to Birdhouse Realty and so on, it was, it was a clerical mistake, it was frankly just put in the wrong pile, it should have been denied, and it was put in the pile that was approved, and it was simply an accident that our office made, and it's too late, it's too late to change it.
All that, what I'll swear in a minute.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to give testimony in this case? Is there any way, I know you're concerned about the safety and, and...
It's gonna be a nightmare, and I don't, I, I, I can't imagine who's gonna explain to the next person who gets hit by a car at that intersection, hundreds, I'm telling you, if not a thousand kids walk across that street at that point every single day, let's face it, there, some of them are derelicts, they're walking out in front of cars to begin with, alls you're gonna do is add another second of somebody looking in another direction, and a catastrophe is gonna happen, and I will not, I, I, I will not support it.
Is, is there any way that, since it's a digital sign, it could be turned off during certain hours? certain hours, such as school dismissal and school, the start of school?
Yeah, we can control the time, we have the ability to control the time however we want to, I mean...
So, if you turn the sign off when they get to school and then you can turn the sign back on after they've gone home, just to prevent that?
We have the ability to do that, absolutely.
That's just a, I mean, I can't put on it anyway, but it just seems like a solution to his, to his concern.
Yeah, I mean, that's the...
Which is, which is a concern because I've hit, I'll come close and hitting kids, they just walk across, they put their earbuds on.
Oh, I understand, and I think the, I think the biggest problem with the kids crossing the street is them looking at their phones more than looking at any of the other surroundings there. So, I think that's, if anything, that's probably the bigger issue is their, the screens in their hands, you know what I mean? I understand where you're coming from.
With that in mind, can the time slot for the advertisement be longer than normal when there's kids crossing and cars going through? Like, what's a normal time slot for that, thirty seconds?
Uh, eight seconds is the, is the interval that we do. We could probably go longer if we needed to, I'd actually have to look into some of the...
I'm just trying to find that medium spot where there's maybe, that's dawn out of safety.
And like, like we had mentioned before too, I mean, we were looking at, at pushing the sign a little bit back if we needed to, closer towards what's now the Taco Bell. We also have the ability to push the sign back closer to the baseball field that's there. It doesn't have to be positioned right then and there on that intersection the way we have it. Again, that's our ideal location for the sign to go, but we do have flexibility with the school district on where the actual placement of that sign is. So, to your point, Mr. Paul Matisse, I understand like that being the intersection where everybody's crossing, but if we went a little bit further back, again, closer towards the soccer fields and the baseball fields, I don't know if that could be a, a solution to this problem.
That could be a possible solution, especially if you move it away from the intersection.
So, that's...
I would like to see it away from the intersection as far as possible. I'm telling you, it's going to come back to haunt someone. It's exactly what's going to happen because then it's something that's, now they have something to blame, distraction. We're, we're creating that distraction. So, I don't know if you want to back here, you want to revisit it, re-measure. I will, I will definitely be interested in seeing anything.
Sure.
But where is that? I, I think, I think you're, you're, you're looking at creating that.
If I may ask, what would be a sufficient distance for you from?
I would have to see it. I would have to see a picture of where it is.
Okay.
You're only twenty feet off the ground. Your, your line of vision is automatically picking that up. I drive up and down highways and I drive every, I drive hardly more miles than three people in this building. I, I, I know exactly, I mean, someone at a billboard is a hundred feet off the ground, that's why not. So, like I said, we're blatantly putting that right in front of where it is and nobody's going to come out of it. So, like I said, you want to revisit it? I'm more than willing to take a second look at it.
And I, I, I think, you know, he, he does have a valid concern, you know, and maybe if you do want to see if you can back the sign up like he said, and maybe we can look at it next month with a, you know, another, you know, how far you can back it off the corner.
Sure. Now, the, the question of the arterial road, I mean, that was obviously a, a big part of this, is that, has that problem been, been resolved? I mean...
No. No, no. Nice try, but no.
How about any date, any timetable for the change of the street classification map?
What year is it?
Yeah, you're not going to get that.
No, I would say would be at best this fall.
This fall at the earliest?
At best.
I'm, I'm...
We should request the continuance.
My, my thought is I don't think this board is bound by an old map that's obviously outdated. I think this board has the capability of deciding whether the new Seventh Street is an arterial street. I, I think that the board has that power.
I think we're all comfortable with that, and I'm not going to speak for, I'm not going to speak for myself. I think we're all comfortable with that aspect of it. What we're looking at is the proximity of that sign. I mean, the school just owns a lot of land before you get to that baseball field that's there, even to take it back and like straight towards the field. I think if you...
Want me to be there one day or happy to meet you there?
Absolutely. Okay.
Well, well, does that have to necessarily delay tonight's vote? I mean, if we're in a...
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm not going to vote to approve the board until it's, we're, because I don't want you to come back next month and, or to say you moved it a foot. Okay? But I don't know your measurements, how much land they have to play with there. I mean, I'd say fifty feet back, but that might take it into the baseball field, sorry, or the soccer field, whatever it's right there. So, I'd rather get a, a firm measurement where it is so we could see it and I, I think you'd be good.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Then we'd like to request the continuance.
Dave, I would be willing to meet with Mr. Paul Matisse and you.
Okay.
And let me ask you a question, let, let, just continue a little bit farther. Why is it so low?
I'm sorry?
Why is it so low?
Line of sight in the car. I mean, we don't want to go twenty-five feet off the, off the ground either, yeah, I mean, or thirty-five feet off the ground. I forget what the, what the requirements call for in the, the ordinance, but traditionally we do a ten or fifteen-foot pole and arterial roads like this. The sign that we have over on Kaiser Avenue is very similar, sign on Wyoming Avenue near Scranton Prep, very similar.
We've had it come before, it's like higher, and I mean, it just seems like, just looking at the picture, and it's only a render and everything, it just looks low to the ground.
The maximum height is forty feet apparently.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Would you like to request to table this until next month?
Yes, we would, please.
Yes. Okay, if you can make, request that, please?
We'd like to request a, a continuance or that it be tabled, thank you.
I make a motion for a continuance.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
There's no point me voting for the continuance if I can't vote for the...
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Matisse?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes, by a vote of four to zero, you have been approved for continued to next month and we look forward to seeing you here.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Plan for a long night.
Agenda item number six, Birdhouse Outdoor.
That's number five, you're confusing me, Jack.
Well, we're moving around because of the continuance.
I know, I don't, I don't have that copy.
My number still matches either.
I wasn't giving...
The numbers are out the window this month.
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Matt Barrett, I'm here on behalf of Birdhouse. It's a billboard case. At issue is Greenridge Corners, so just beyond the intersection of Greenridge and, or Sanderson and East Market, Mickey Gannon's Bar is on the first floor. It's an apartment building. Do you have the application itself and you have depiction of the, of the proposed sign?
I, we just, we were just given a piece of paper.
Is the, is the photograph or anything behind it?
Nothing, we were just given a piece of paper, yeah.
No problem. You want to go?
So, I have Ryan Adcroft here tonight. Ryan is the principal of Birdhouse.
And we still need to be swearing in, correct?
Yeah, if I need to do it right now, this way, you'll be good to go, Ryan.
Ryan Adcroft, A-D-C-R-O-F-T, eight oh one, elect, through Scranton.
If I need to raise your right hand. Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, in essence, it's a wall sign. I think you, you folks have dealt with the wall signs in the past. I'll wait till everybody has, does everybody have a copy of the sign?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we'll pass it.
Yep, okay.
So, the wall sign is to be installed on the side of Mickey Gannon's Bar?
That's correct. Do you need a copy, Dan?
I don't have one.
Yeah, I never got one.
He has one?
If, if you have one for us.
I think Jack's, Mr. Sweeney has one now. Okay. So, in essence, what we're looking for is a variance. The reason why we're looking for the variance is because this is located in the CN zone, but it is just beyond the IL zone, which is over by Dixon Plant or where the, over Dixon Avenue. So, there's an IL zone there. So, under the regulations, four fifty, four forty-five, sixty-nine requires that it be within a hundred and fifty feet, I'm sorry, of, of fourth, under section, I guess it's F-one, would be a requirement that it be within a hundred and fifty feet of an existing IG or IL. So, we're just beyond that by about six hundred feet. So, we're looking for a variance with regards to that measurement.
Actually, it's about...
How far is just beyond Dixon?
It's actually just about five hundred, about five hundred feet, yeah.
Okay.
And the only other thing I can do to provide some assistance, albeit... I can show you, this is across the street, a sign that existed, and I give this to you for the herd establishment, just that was an off-premises sign located in the CN or beyond. And while I acknowledge that, that picture depicts Brunetti's, which I think would, that is still next door to that property, but if you notice that it says park outdoors, so that would have been a off-premises sign.
What, what, what section of the, what ordinance is this? What section of seven?
Seven, seven twelve F.
Seven twelve F. One, two, three, four.
B.
One B, okay. Thank you.
So, light is signed.
It will not be lighted, yes.
How many feet away did you say you were from the IGL slash IL zone?
Approximately five hundred.
Five hundred.
So, they need a variance from B-one, which is a hundred and fifty feet from the IL zone and they're five hundred feet from the IL zone. They also need a variance from B-two, where it says the sign shall not face east or west Market Street. So, it's kind of a, one variance here.
Just with regards to B-two, I would take the position the sign does not abut east Market Street.
It doesn't abut, but it does face.
But, but the way that's written, it seems to say to me, abut and, as opposed to or. So, abut and face, so it would seem...
Okay, good argument.
It would seem that because it does not abut, it doesn't, it fails for that reason, maybe.
That's a, that's a good argument.
Thanks.
You're hard.
You said no to lit, right?
Correct.
Is anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Matisse?
No.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, by a vote of four to one, you have been approved.
Good luck. Thank you. Have a good night.
Agenda item number seven. Lori Coleman. Ryan, Ryan, call me tomorrow. Here. Lori, you have an extra copy of that?
Oh, please, there's only five copies.
There's five.
Yeah, no, there was only five.
Five. It was just the statement from Roger, because he's ill right now, so.
We'll start with, we're going to start with the first one to give, swear in.
Okay.
Who wants to go first?
Is it okay if I just speak for everyone? I'm her spouse.
Are they going to speak to you?
What's that?
Are they going to speak to you?
Uh, no, I was just going to speak. I have everything I need, so.
I'm going to swear, let's swear everybody in.
Yeah, swear a minute, I can't say you have something to say.
We're going to swear everybody in.
No, probably, that's... You can, you could be sworn in at the same time if you have the same...
Oh, okay, cool.
Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, we'll start with you in the center. State your name and address and please spell your last name.
It's Dawn Sporer Coleman, S-P-O-R-E-R hyphen C-O-L-E-M-A-N, and it's one oh six Pine Tree Drive, Clark Summit, PA, one eight four one one.
Next.
Good evening, my name's Lori Coleman, one oh six Pine Tree Drive, Clark Summit.
Thank you.
Coleman, C-O-L-E-M-A-N.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Walter Longcor, one oh six Pine Tree Drive, L-O-N-G-C-O-R.
Okay, thank you. You can proceed with your testimony, please.
Okay. We are looking to get a variance for the property fourteen oh three. It is right now a commercial office zoned, is that correct?
R-two oh, I believe. Residential two oh.
R-two, okay. And we're asking for the variance to make it retail. We're looking to do a vaporizer shop and also essential oils, various wellness items, just, anything that won't conflict with the store next door, the little tobacco shop is right next door to us. So, we won't sell tobacco or anything like that, but they have, you know, quite a few items, so we don't want to conflict with them.
Is that, is that it?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure, like, do I just answer your questions or I, I'm not sure.
Well, the only problem with...
This is my first...
The only problem with this is that there's no parking, off-street parking.
Um, yes, Roger said that there's the lot in the back that we can use for parking.
Is that, is that, because it looked like it was the next door building that was, that had the lot, I saw the lot.
I, I mean, it, that's what Ro, it, it's his building. He said that there is the parking around the back, so.
Just for the record, Roger was supposed to provide me with a plan to show how many spaces...
spaces, how you get in and out, but he never did. Maybe it has something to do with his illness.
Yeah, yeah. He was in the hospital, um, and he did... Yeah, he's still in the hospital.
But I never got the plan, and neither did the board.
So, let's... Let's stop right there, then.
Okay.
I can ask you the same thing that happened the last one, and this is strictly up to you.
Right.
We can proceed with the case, wait it is, but once again, we don't have a parking plan or definite plans. We can't vote on something that we can't see. We don't see your parking, because when I went out and looked at it, I pulled in front of your prospective building there, and that was it. I didn't know anything about the back, and I'm sure the rest of the board did the same thing. So, it might be advantageous to you to request to table this and come back again on a later date with the full parking plan. Roger will be feeling better at that time to help you out with it, but the more facts you give us to look at and make it, you know, a good decision, maybe better.
The other thing you should do is let us know what the square footage of the area you're gonna be using.
It's 400.
You do have that, okay.
Yes. Yeah. Um, the only issue that we have, we were supposed to be partners with somebody on the business, and he did not tell us it wasn't zoned for retail, so, um, he... Well, he lied to us for quite some time. So, we're already, like, way behind on it, and, um, you know, we really liked the space, you know, which is why we wanted to pursue with the variance.
I can appreciate that, but I'm gonna go back to what I just said.
Right.
Also, it's an in-and-out business, so I mean...
It's still... There's still requirements for parking, though. No different than the store next to you. If there's a store to open up across the street from you there, there's still requirements that have to be met. As of right now, you're not meeting them.
Plus, there's employee parking as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to steer you into something, and I understand what you're saying. You're up against the wall.
Right.
But it... I think if you could...
Now, if you have trouble with Roger, I would meet you out there and help you put together the plan for next month's hearing.
Okay. But would we have to wait till next month, then?
February, yeah. February 13th.
So, there's no way to, um... Like, you guys are not gonna approve it if we don't have the parking?
Well, I'm not gonna say, but i... It's a roll of the dice. I mean, you could say, continue with this, and we could take a vote, and if you lose, then you lose $400.
Right. Well, I know that...
Jack, just for... It looks like that building itself has another business. It looks like it has multiple apartments. Are they gonna need parking for all of the other activities in that building, or...
To the best of my knowledge, there's one apartment that's being used. The others are vacant, but there are, I think, three apartments, right? There's three mail...
I believe so.
There's a... There's an apartment next door, and it's multiple apartments on floors.
There's three mailboxes, let me put it that way.
Yeah, we've met quite a few of the neighbors next door, so I do know...
So, there's three mailboxes, so assume there's three apartments, and then there is the corner tobacco sh... Convenience store.
Most of those are grandfathered in. This one, this... Which was a commercial space for a bail bond guy.
Right.
Has been vacant for a time period, so now...
The grandfather goes away.
The grandfather goes away for this particular space.
Dan, just for my clarification, it doesn't change the rest of the building, just this storefront.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I know the property, and I would say there's 12 spots in the back.
Have you spoken to the... Obviously, you've spoken to the people at the shop.
I've spoken to the owner of the building.
And they don't... And they don't object? I mean, they're not here, so...
No. Like I said, we're not gonna do anything that would conflict with what they have in there, so...
Yeah, we specifically don't wanna clash with them, so it's kind of our own thing.
Right. Well, I believe it was Roger's building. Like, he had that part. He just recently sold it.
So, he's owned... He owns the building, and you're renting it from him, or you're buying the building?
Yes.
So, you're renting this space from him?
Yes. Yeah, but he did also own the little store there, and I guess he recently sold just that store.
We were anticipating, you know, starting sometime in December.
Right.
We're just unaware of these things coming up with Chris, kind of led us down the wrong path, and the more the time goes by, the less likely that we're gonna succeed, because we do have a plan ready to go.
I... And again, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but I mean, there's guidelines that have to be followed, and, you know, I'm sorry that your word led down the wrong path, but...
Well, what can we do to speed it up and...
Well, basically, what he's saying is it's a roll of the dice. We can... You can, you know, sit here and be like, oh, please, you know, hopefully they'll... They'll approve it, or we can get the parking plan and wait next month.
They wanna do that.
Yeah, we're just... We're just trying to help you, yeah.
They can vote on it right now, but...
I was just thinking, while we're standing here, if we could do a vote contingent amount of certain amount of spots that would be required.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Do we know based on the square footage?
And then I would have to... For 400 square feet, you need... They need two off-street parking spots.
We need two off-street parking spots.
And I'm fairly confident that they're there. I grew up in that neighborhood, so I know the building quite well, but I would verify that, and they would not be able to proceed until I verify the parking plan and...
So, you suggest that we vote with contingency that you both see the spots?
Yeah, I think if you get something that dedicates two of those spots to this business...
It would be contingent on providing two spots.
Condition of approval. But...
But it's up to you.
The only downside I... And I see first, we don't know who's using the spots. It could be tenant spots, and we don't know how exactly back there, so...
Well, I would have to verify that with Roger, that they're dedicated for this particular spot.
That's why I said there have to be two dedicated spots.
And I would have to get that in writing.
You know, a sign there.
And I'm just...
A sign in the...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We would put signs then on that. Would that be...
Well, we'd have to get the details straightened out to the liking of the board, but if you wanted to try to do something like that to proceed ahead, it's up to the board. I'm just trying to help you out, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Right.
Oh, it's not... Don't thank me. Thank the board.
Did anyone else on the board besides me see the spots in the back? See, I turned there, so when I turned there, I saw the spots.
They're right off of New York Street. Yeah, they're right off of New York Street, and...
Now, there's two levels of spots. You park in... You pull into one line, and then there was one further back.
Top, right. That's correct, yes.
Which is... Which is the one... Which is the ones that you would utilize?
Probably the first lot.
The ones at the second set of spots, or the...
I would say the first spot, the first lot.
Okay. Well, I saw them, but they didn't, so...
Like, we would be the first spot. The apartments are next to us, so I would assume...
And again, it's just a thought.
Like you said, the first one.
I'm not trying to overstep my bounds.
I mean, I would be willing to get, you know, work with Roger and do the footwork, you know, since he's in the hospital, and I could get signs, pictures, whatever you guys need. I just wasn't aware that he wasn't able to get that to you.
Jack, we're looking at a picture right now that Paul has, and we can't... Like, I can't tell the dimensions of that lot. If it's deep enough to even have, or they're gonna turn around so they can pull back out onto the street instead of backing onto the street, so... I'm just gonna speak, and just a little more comfortable if we push this back to the next month.
Again, whatever you decide.
Again, I just, if the rest of the board is with it, then we can go with it, but...
Would it be possible to be approved, contingent on us meeting the...
That's what he was saying.
Right. That's what we're discussing right now.
Yeah.
But also, at the same time, you also run the risk of it not being suitable for parking then, so...
Right.
You're better off... That's why I said you're better off to actually bring in the parking plan at the same time, so you could go either way.
Can we submit the parking plan prior to the next meeting?
Well, we can submit...
You can show... You can show Jack the parking plan if you get it before the next meeting.
Yeah, I would work out... I would definitely work the plan out with you before the next meeting, so that it's acceptable to me, and then hopefully the board will agree. It's the safest way to go.
Yeah.
It's gonna be real cold. Nobody's gonna be vaping.
What's that? I'm sorry, Mr. Scranton.
Just kidding. It's gonna be real cold in the next month. Nobody will be vaping.
That's... Yeah. That's why we were gonna, like, do small hours.
Yeah, I might start.
They'll be vaping. You can vape in the house. Smoking is the problem. You gotta go outside for that. See, Jack, I think debate is that we don't want it to fall on you. If you get there, and then you find out that the spots aren't big enough, and then you get their hopes up, and then...
Yeah, well, again, you're right. I don't wanna get anybody's hopes up. I know the property fairly well, and if Roger stipulates, I'm sure I could get two spots in there.
If there was a parking plan presented here, I would just look for it and make a determination when I was there. I have no problem going back there to look at it. It's just not gonna afford something or approve something yet. I am not doing it.
Yeah, so I think...
We're just... Our biggest...
I saw it, but it was...
You know, again, with the setbacks, but now we're worried that if it's not adequate, then we're pushing it back a month, so we're gonna have to find somewhere else.
I'd like to see a plan.
Well, I'll meet you next week. I'll meet you whenever you want. I'll meet you whenever you want, and you'll have to make sure that Roger approves whatever we approve.
I think your best bet is to request a continuance.
I agree.
Yeah. We just discuss amongst ourselves, and I think that's the best avenue for you as well as us, is to continue.
Because if the spot is... If the space is there for the spaces, but the spaces aren't available, you know, they're not... Then you could probably... You might be able to make space, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So, I think that if you request a continuance, then we'll see you next month, and we have a lot more to go by.
Okay. Well, I mean, that will be another charge.
No. No. That's why you filed the continuance.
That's why you're gonna ask... Make... Ask us to table this tonight till next month, so that's what we're waiting on you to do right now.
And your $400 will carry over to the next meeting.
Okay.
And you'll automatically be on the agenda.
So...
Okay.
And I'll put you on the top of the agenda, so you won't have to wait.
So, you need... You need to make that request right now.
Okay. I would like to request a continuance.
Yep, till next month.
To table it till next month.
Okay. Make the motion for a continuance?
I'll vote on the...
I'll second the continuance.
Wait a second. Mr. Walsh?
Yes, on the continuance.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes, on the continuance. By a vote of five to zero, you've been approved to continue this to next month, February 13th, if I'm not mistaken.
And then you call my office, and we'll set a date after that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, if I can get with you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Yeah.
That's how we decided tonight. Everything else got continued. Better get better for next month, then. Mm-hmm. And Marionwood might be coming back next month. They were continued again as well. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. I mean, I haven't even spoke to them, you know, to try to explain what was, you know... They just seem to be not prepared. It's okay. Oh, um, there. What was that lady's name again? For next month? No, I mean, for the transcriber, for next month. Oh, okay. Good for you. Good for you.
Okay, new business? New whole business or new business?
We gotta get those back. We gotta get the signed things back. The signed decisions. Sean must have it by now. Jack, spitting little pen again? Right, boy. They just want... They wanna buy my coat. It's the third or fourth time somebody said, "Where'd you get those coats?" I said, "They're not." They handed them out to us. "Well, I want... I wanna buy that. I'll give you 20 bucks for it." I said, "Well, maybe." I said, "I can't sell it because of my new pen." For me, putting the signed decision in the garbage. You don't do that. I have a chart? No, Roger's a pain in my ass, and he did tell me he was bringing me a parking plan. But then I didn't hear from him. I knew something about him. He's just been... Hard out of his... Like, every day. I can tell. I think they wanna reorganize.
So, we gotta reorganize.
So, we on record? Are we on record?
We're on record. On record.
On the record.
We gotta be on the record. We can't be off the record for this. Okay, your mic's not on.
And the microphone? Okay, great. So, we would have a chair, a co-chair, and then three members, and then what would happen in the next year is the co-chair moves up to chair, and then they wait their turn, and they go through the cycle again. Sean, I think you're a great chairperson, but you were... You were, like, in your four years, I think you were only not chair one year or five years, but only because you were up for renewal, and I explained...
I was only chair once before.
Yeah, and then you were co-chair twice to Al. Remember, Al was chair, and you were co-chair both times. Al was chair, so co-chair. And I was chair once, and I haven't been chair in, what, five and a half? Since any of you have been on board, I haven't been co-chair, and I take time away from my family, as everybody else does, and I just think that the way... Things that I've been hearing are a little bit disturbing, because everything's changed, and I don't see what was wrong with the wrong way. Everyone just waits their turn, and then they go on. And I don't... I mean, and I...
Just... Just not that you said I was co-chair twice, but was only chair...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, either co-chair or chair.
So why wasn't I chair after my co-chair then, uh, my second time?
Huh? Because you were up for re, you were up for re, your contract was, your contract was up, your five years was up. So the, for the first year, you were nothing, because you were new, so you didn't know. The second year, you were co-chair, and Al was chair, or Al was, or one of the two, or actually, I think I might have, anyway, so you were, your contract was up, that's why. So when you went from co-chair, and then, then you went to nothing, because there was no guarantee. Oh, I didn't think it was, can he stop? Can you get Mark to stop?
Oh, you want it off TV? You can, you can get it off TV, yeah. So you want me to just tell them? We have to be on the record, we have to be on the record, but we don't have to be on TV.
Yeah, adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, it's very well.
Sure. She can't hear you. And then we'll re, we'll reopen the meeting.
Meeting adjourned.